I would officially convene our regularly scheduled City Council meeting and call it to order at 6:09 PM. Thank you. So with that, we've already called the meeting to order. I suggest, as we've done in the past, that we dispense with all of the regular formality, since we did it at the outset of the workshop, and we'll proceed with the Mayor's report.
You want to make a note that Andy is present now? Because he wasn't present when we took the vote.
Oh, yes. Excellent. Thank you. So Mr. Watson will be considered present and counted for. As far as the Mayor's report, I wanted to brief the Council on the latest regarding the Fourth of July event, which is obviously coming up next week and a half. We're assessing or in the process of acquiring some barricades that we'll utilize in closing off the streets with a little higher level of professionalism, and so we've set that in motion. We're looking into the feasibility of sweeping our streets prior to the parade, the lawnmower parade and the bicycle parade. And we've gotten a new garbage can lid for Warden Park finally after it's been a number of years that's been public dinosaur. And I think everything is in place for the Fourth of July fireworks and such, and we'd invite all to come and invite neighbors, friends and family to participate. Any questions or concerns on that Mayor's talking point? Then I would like to bring to the Council's attention that I've been approached the last several days about the National Day of Service, and was informed this very morning that the organizers of that event out of Chehalis, which represent a number of churches and private, or Walmart and others, would like to know what project -- oh, they've approved Vader for involvement in that National Day of Service. Winlock is trying, but haven't gotten approval yet for that, but I suspect they'll get some approval. They would like us to identify by July 15th three or four projects for consideration. And so in discussion with our city staff, we've identified three, and I'd invite the Council to come up with one or two more if you can think of any. We're looking at chipping at the waste treatment plant, and in conjunction with that, we've ran two or three chippers, and one of the organizers indicated that the county has this monster -- wait, that was Joe.
It was me.
His monster chipper that if we asked, maybe they would rent it or something.
It's possible.
Okay. And that could utilize a tractor or a backhoe?
It's called a tub grinder, and you can just take tractor loads and just dump it in instead of having to hand feed it. You can just fill large quantities in at once.
Interesting. Do we have a comment from the public? It looks painful.
Just talking about one of those, that would be awesome.
Would that come out on a trailer?
I think it's part of like, yeah, it's on a tractor, tractor trailer thing.
Certainly something that if the Council's interested in, but my thinking was that we'd get two or three, and maybe get the free county one, and get three of them set up and have 15 or 20 volunteers just pick into that pile until it disappears, is what I was thinking. But in any event, pipe up and tell me if you think that these projects are worthy of the event. Second option would be to do some limbing along some of the overhangs that have plagued our community for the last year or two. And Jill, do you remember, it was B Street?
Along 10th and 8th on the agenda. Just question mark because I think those are the streets, but there are others as well that could probably be identified.
Yeah. And so we'd have some individuals limbing for us, and we'd haul those limbs somehow on a trailer and maybe over to where the chippers were at. So we'd get kind of a twofer on that. Other, third one would be the weed eating. Last year, we had maybe six or eight people, the volunteers who brought weed eaters, and we just assigned them along some of our brushier zones. And so do you have any ideas? The park looks beautiful down at McMurphy, and last year, we cleared all the knotweed out. A prodigious project, I thought, but I don't see as much knotweed there, so I would opt not to include that.
He has been spraying down there. Did at least one spray job I'm aware of.
Is that right? He's to be commended, and the park board is to be commended for sprucing that up beautifully. Okay? So that's that topic. You have until the 15th to throw others into the consideration pile. I wanted to make, bring to your attention that Jill traveled yesterday all the way to Wenatchee. Was that about a five-hour drive?
A little more than, it was about four there and about five back.
For the purpose of representing the city at the annual Risk Management Services Agency conference, and by having somebody in attendance, we received a $500 certificate that can be used in our general fund, which will buy a couple of loads of gravel.
It's supposed to be risk management use?
Yes, so we can fill potholes or use it.
Or sawdust under the swings or something like that that provides risk management.
Excellent, yeah. And for the second year in a row, the city of Vader has not had any claims on our insurance, so we already have the plaque, and so we presented Jill on behalf of the city of 2014. And so far, we're well into 2015, so we're good with that. Apparently, all those who were in attendance, Jill brought home for the community and engraved.
Those were handmade by a member of AWC staff.
Is that right?
Yes.
Well, that was worth your drive right there.
She made every single one, yeah.
I'd be proud of this.
And by the way, our claims free is, this is our third year in a row.
Oh.
Now, we have two up there already, so just.
Well, that's an important point. So, no, that's significant. I can tell you, we're entering rarefied air in the number of communities that if we can go three years in a row, that's -- wait, we're in the fourth year.
We've already gone three. We're halfway through our fourth year.
Hmm. They need to up our bonus.
We should get lower rates.
Or do something. In any event, that was good report. We're grateful to you having driven all that way in less than a 12-hour period and.
And I brought back from the great city of Wenatchee some applets and cotlets, so you guys come home yourself afterwards. Figure we gotta have a little bit of that.
What is it?
Applets and cotlets.
Yeah.
Or those. The jelly candies.
They're like Turkish delight. Have you ever heard of that?
That's Washington National Dessert.
This is a version of it without nuts.
I might go into euphoria, and I can't handle eating.
There's all your flavors.
I have seen this stuff. I'll wait till afterwards.
Okay.
Let's see. I think that's, there was another topic.
Look at your other agenda, your updated one. Yeah, that's the updated one. See if there's anything else.
Okay. Well, I did cover them all. So we're good. With that, I conclude the Mayor's report, and I move onward now with our agenda approval. And I don't have any adjustments to the agenda unless the Council member has one, and if not, I'd wait for Council action.
I'm wondering, does the park board have a report? Do you want us to add that? No, okay.
I move we approve the City Council meeting agenda for 6/25/2015.
Okay. Heard the motions submitted by Mr. Plant to approve the Council agenda as written. Now, do we have a second?
I have a second.
Second by Mr. Pennison. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried. Now the minutes approval for the June 11th City Council meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the City Council meeting minutes from June 11th, 2015.
Mr. Scheiss submitted a motion to approve those minutes. Do you have a second?
I have a second.
Yes.
I'm sorry, can you also include the work study, the rate study workshop as well?
Yes, and also including the June 11th rate study workshop in that.
Insertion of the approval of the rate study workshop. You still have a second?
Yes.
Any others? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I'd like to consider voucher approvals for the first half of June, end of June.
I'll make a motion to approve the vouchers for the first half of June, amount of $27,746.76, and the end of June 2015 total of $1,780.79, for a total for June 2015 of $29,527.55.
Mr. Scheiss submitted a motion to approve the June expenditures in the amounts so indicated. Do we have a second?
I have a second.
Then, Mr. Watson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Public comment? Now, proceed with the city business. Council to consider ordinance 2015-05, interim ban on marijuana activities. To set the stage for this conversation, I know that is undoubtedly going to be somewhat frustrating for the two of the council members, and I believe this would be our third extension? Second or third?
It's the second extension, the third ordinance, yeah. The second extension. The third actual ordinance, yeah.
And you got to be wondering, what on earth is going on? Well, we're working with Carol Morris, and you don't need me to remind you that she's a bulldog, and she's got her legal gaze on the state legislators who are doing their best to trump the efforts of small communities like ours to thwart our efforts to put moratorium and permanent bans on marijuana uses and such. And in the process, that's requiring us to kind of respond with public hearings and public meetings and revisions of the verbiage, and it's been, speaking behalf of the city clerk and myself, absolutely mentally paralyzing to try and follow what it is expected of us, given the changing of the end zone. And so intervening in an effort to try and break through this maze of legal confusion, I took over the topic and confronted, not confronted, but approached Carol Morris to explain exactly what it is that we're doing and why. And it was pleasant conversation, because the more you get to know Carol Morris, I've got to make it very clear here that we are so fortunate to have her. You may think that, well, good grief, she was just stalling or something, but reality is, in her bulldoggedness, she's trying to accomplish the will of the Council, yet do it in a way that shows the most legal sense. And so in my conversation with her, she suggested that before we go any further with it, that she be allowed, and I gave her authorization to do this, to prepare for me and for you a list of exactly what steps, legal steps we ought to implement. That was on Friday of last week.
I think it was Friday of last week.
It was last week, Thursday or Friday. So the question I had, I know you were absent, as of Wednesday, we hadn't gotten.
As of yesterday morning, yeah. I hadn't gotten that from her. I don't know if it's there now, but.
Maybe it's in the email, but she was going to send me a copy of it. So I would invite you to go ahead and consider this ordinance based on the reality that Carol Morris is going to provide us this little synopsis, which is going to clearly and succinctly explain what steps and why we're engaging in this. So, and this action tonight is somewhat significant, and it needs to be done, I believe, in order to follow the calibrical requirements of our current status. Did I capture that?
I think so.
So I would encourage the Council, with that, I know rather obtuse explanation, to close your eyes, swallow hard, and consider action on this, relying on Carol Morris's legal wisdom. So there you have it.
I'll move a motion, and we approve the ordinance number 2015-05 as drafted.
Okay, Mr. Plant has submitted a motion to approve the ordinance as drafted.
I think you need to read the small story here on the wall.
No, I just move it as drafted. I'll wait for the discussion portion, but I will say something, but I think we should move it as drafted.
Okay, yes.
Would you be willing to include the additional motion of setting the public hearing, because there has to be a public hearing for this ordinance for our next council meeting that John will be at nine?
Sure. Why not?
Okay.
I recommend that the day for a public hearing on the continued maintenance of the interim zoning ordinance be set for July 9th, 2015, which is less than six days after today.
Okay. You have, you heard the motion submitted to the Council regarding approval of this motion with contingency so noted. Do we have a second?
I have a second.
Second by Mr. Pennison. Now is the time for further commentary.
Good, I'd like to discuss something. We had, we just went through a whole hour meeting on rate planning for sewers, and the conclusion was, we have to look for more people to live here. And if we were to put a pot plant in or allow it, I would say that we're not going to gain, we're going to lose people. And I understand Cal Morris has sent us some through the electronic aid wonders, three different reports that are an accumulation of all the problems that have happened to cities that have passed it, and I think any meetings we have, those things should be put right in front of the people and say, we back this up with this. There's no more of this fairy tales, we have facts. And I'm tired of the wasting of time we put up with Brandon Milton, and I personally don't want to see it happen again. And I would like to have all those facts present, gives us some strength, gives us credibility, and we're not playing, tell them we're not playing games anymore, we're not going to go putting up with his fairy tales.
Well, you know, I think they're going to do what they've done before. They're going to go up there and do the thing, but I think we have to make a decision whether we want to get involved. Are we here to listen to them?
No.
Or are we going to interact?
I was a developer, and as a developer, I had to go in front of the City Council or the Board or whoever was involved, and it was up to me to convince them to do it. It wasn't up to the Council to ask me for, how do I like this and what questions do I have? That was not, not the job of the Council. My job as a developer was to go in and convince them, this is why this project is benefits to the city. He has never done that, other than tell us, we're going to make tons of money, and that's been disproven every time you turn around.
Well, he wanted to make a debate. So he wanted to make, he made a debate.
Right. He wasted 27 minutes the last time, and we're not going to do that again. And I think if we have all the facts to base it up, we should pass this ordinance to protect ourselves and protect the pretty people in this town.
It'd be a good idea, knowing to have that typed up, put together, but passed out.
Well, the volume of material is about this thick.
Oh, boy.
I mean, we're not talking one or two pages. There's so much of it. I came down and asked Jill if I could just copy it. She said, Kevin, the volume is too much.
There's several hundred. I'm still working on printing them out so we at least have one copy here.
Maybe a synopsis, can we have?
Yeah, or you can look it up online. It's online, too.
Yeah, but if we had a synopsis of the pivotal points, you know.
But for the, for our own legal protection, we have to have a copy of it, and we, if we make this as an ordinance, a permanent ordinance, we're going to have to include all that in the ordinance to make sure we are protected.
Good point, and well stated. Very heartfelt, I can tell. We do have a comment from our city clerk.
Just in talking about the public hearing and how that, with all the stories and everything, I just wanted to remind you that the public hearing is supposed to be about this ordinance, not about what businesses want to come to Vader. So if you want to, when you have your public hearing, you as a Council can remind the people who are speaking that they must speak about this ordinance, not about their own personal activities. And so you can require that. You can allow them to talk about their own personal activities if you want, but if you don't want to hear it anymore, you can tell them, because officially, the public hearing is about this ordinance and the effect this.
It may be time as a Council to really put your foot down.
Well, I think so. I think we've, there's no, I know we've gone at this, we've pussyfooted around, we've handled them with kid gloves, because everybody's afraid of a lawsuit. There's no way in this God's creation that he can come against the city and say, we didn't give him time, we didn't allow him the opportunity to counter anything we've said. He has been given, and it's all been recorded, every possible chance to put his side of the story out. He has never, other than saying, we're going to make a lot of money, tried to convince us how it's going to benefit this city, and he's presented no facts.
Well, to his credit, he, he did take the ordinance, and I think it was Section E, and asked questions, asked us questions based on that section, and said, these are your concerns, and then went at it from that.
But he asked us questions, and that's where he's wrong. It's not, it's not up to us to sit there and ask, answer his questions. He is supposed to answer our questions, and he is supposed to convince us the benefits of putting that in this town. And so far, I haven't seen it, and he hasn't even made an attempt. He's, he's twisted it totally around and made us, put us in the defensive.
Yeah, well, I think we're going to deal with this again. We're going to try this attempt.
Oh, yes, I know.
So we're going to be ready to, either let the Mayor, as the moderator, handle that, because he's wanting to engage us in it.
I'm not afraid to handle it at all, because I'm done with this clown and his, his method. I don't like his method. And I think when we have this meeting, I like to have those documents here, and anything he refers to, I know what's in those documents, because I've been reading all the reports, I just don't save them.
Sounds wise and passionate at the same time.
So I'm ready for a vote, but I had to say that. I'm sorry if I wasted everybody's time, but I just wanted to get it out.
I know that I did see that a member of the public had a comment, or did you want to? Okay, then last.
One last comment. The public hearing is for them to give you their opinion, their opinion about the ordinance you're passing and how it's going to affect the community. It's not supposed to be a question and answer period.
That's right. And if they have it, they get their three minutes and that's it.
Comment here. It's their opinion about how this will affect the community and whether they think it should pass or not. That is what it's supposed to be. It's not supposed to be questioned.
That's a very good point. The Council has a whole lot of latitude. You could make this a 15-minute thing and give everyone 60 seconds if you think you've heard it before. Bear that in mind. Okay, rational comments before the vote. Okay, thank you for your input on it, and Ms. Metz, did you have some?
I had a little bit.
Oh, okay.
I just wanted to remind everyone that Brandon Milton isn't the only business that has expressed interest in having marijuana-related businesses within the city limits or our urban growth boundary, and so we are, again and again, we talk about him, but there are more businesses than just that business that is interested in coming here. So, and I also agree that the, the supposed benefits to the city would probably not outweigh the negatives to the city, and then the risks associated with that. And now I say my thing.
I'm so glad you mentioned that, because it reminded me of a recent conversation I had at the last Mayor's meeting, in which this obvious topic is still a hot-button issue, and, but the cities of Chehalis and Centralia have succumbed to the forces at work here. But I told the others where we're at in it, and so I had an opportunity to talk to the county commissioners, who I must share with you, told me that it's relevant what the county's approach is going to be, because it impacts our ability to apply these, this sort of moratoria in our urban growth areas. And the county commissioners have assured me that they are going to support our approach. And so if somebody thinks that they're going to move into our urban growth area and the county's just going to cave in and roll over for them, that is not the case. So I was very pleased to hear that. Now, that's talk, but counties got the ordinances in place, I think, to back it up. Wait, I'm getting a negative here?
The last conversation I had with Lee Napier said that every community in Lewis County has that agreement with the county except Vader. We are the only one that does not have that on file for some reason, and so that's something that we can do.
Well, if we take that stance, then we must.
Then we need to do it right now.
I'm startled, because they didn't mention that, but that was.
They probably don't know. Everybody thought that we did, and they have been acting that way, but when she went to find the document, there was no document for the city of Vader.
So do we have to have a motion, have that document?
It's going to have to be some, it's going to be some kind of an agreement that we'll have to get the attorney to write up, I'm sure. The attorneys will talk and get it all together, but if you guys can authorize us to do, to spend time on it, if you would like, to get that on the record, that that's something that we are actively doing as.
While we're working on this motion, there's one thing else everybody has to know. He had eight businesses lined up to move in at 30 acres, and the Brooks Nook was purchased by somebody who wants to put a retail store in there. So if he gets in, just be ready. It's going to, it's going to, it's going to be a mess.
And there's one or two in Enchanted Valley as well. One for sure.
Oh, yeah, there's one for sure in Enchanted Valley, but that's our urban growth area, so we have to sign.
So is Brooks Nook.
Let's vote.
Well, then, as far as I'm concerned, this was an invaluable conversation with the input that led to that. Our next course of actions is to immediately ensure that we have whatever this MOU is that you're referring to in place, and then we'll be rock solid. So excellent, excellent Council input. With that, then, let's put it to a vote. All in favor of the motion before the Council, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Okay, motion is clear.
Can we just make a motion for her to go ahead and do that?
I think we need to, yeah, unless we need to find out what that is.
I think what it, what that will do is show on record a date and time, say, we are working on this as of this time, in case some lawsuit, blah, blah, blah. It's the only thing I can think of that it might benefit.
Well, we don't have to put something on the agenda, that just segues into that. So why don't you segue into a motion, Mark?
Segue into a motion?
A motion.
To establish an MOU with the county.
Okay, I'm so moved to make that motion.
Okay.
Good job, Mark.
So, Mr. Pennison has submitted a motion to set in motion the establishment of the appropriate MOU with the county, reflecting the Council's will on marijuana issue.
Do you have a second there?
I'll second that motion.
We have a second by Mr. Scheiss. Did you capture that?
Practically scribbling here. Okay, so to, an MOU with Lewis County to enforce our development regulations in the UGA.
Yep, exactly.
Gotcha, okay.
Okay, then, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Council update on land acquisition. We're. We're, I believe we're at the status quo. That's about the last.
We're in the process of, of getting the phase one environmental study and the appraisal done.
Super.
Yes, and in that sixty-second synopsis, it's a little more complicated than it seems. That's, it's gonna take a couple of weeks. It involves some research and analysis, part of some professionals, and went through the small work roster, but we're gonna get it done. So a little complicated, but it's not if, it's just when.
Well, our first quote for the appraisal came in at forty-two hundred dollars.
Forty-two hundred?
Yeah.
Give me a break.
Since my husband is a former appraiser, I asked him about it and said, why would it come back so much? And he said, because the appraiser was probably wanting to do a commercial appraisal, because he has to look at the land and its most valuable use. And if its most valuable use is as a commercial property because of its location, then they have to appraise it as a commercial property, and that's why they, that might cost so much, he said. But, he said, talk to some more people. He gave me some names of some people who might be able to help us with that so that it's not, doesn't end up happening to be a commercial appraisal. I don't know for sure. We'll hopefully, we'll all say our prayers that it's.
We could use a miracle. Okay. Well, now, let's proceed. Item three, council discussion on the employee's salary schedule. And I neglected to put that on our last council agenda, and in the meantime, I don't want to. This is, this is being a discussion of the council.
This is the information that council requested the last time we discussed. They wanted to see the local cities and their comparison. I'm sorry, I just jumped right in. I'm sorry.
No, that's okay, cuz it's a good segue. You asked for this information, but in the last two weeks, one of our distinguished council members has done some number crunching. And I'm pleased to report that he shared that with me. And I'm interested and excited to turn the time over to that council member for your consideration of his perspectives. So, Mr. Shai, if you don't mind.
Thank you. I've put quite a bit of time, many, many, many hours into looking into this. So the first thing we were discussing was, how do we wanna go about in the future managing pay increases and the pay scales within the city? Right now, the way it works is there's an annual review with the employee. The mayor, they're either successful or not, and then that's the end of it, period. There's no pay raise associated with it. At some point in time, the mayor will come before the council and say, I think we should raise pay by X percent, and then the council votes yes or no. That's not the way other cities do it. The way other cities do it is they have step increases. And if you remember that chart that Jill passed out a couple of months ago. They were, there were step increases. That's the way every city does it. And so this is a blank, if you notice, this is blank. And this, and the way this would work is that for the city clerk, there are seven steps. Each step would have a different pay associated with it. So as you climb through the steps, you would get a higher pay. It's the way all of the other cities do it. For instance, Jill was gone today, but Diane was here. Napavine sent us their sheet. I have extra ones of these for you, too. This is what Napavine, this is what Napavine sent us, and this is what they use. So it's the same steps that were in that first sheet that I showed you for proposed Vader, but they do theirs horizontally. So I highlighted in bold clerk and deputy clerk. And you can see that from zero to six months, the clerk would earn so much. From seven to twelve, they'd get a pay bump after the probationary period. And then their first year of employment, they'd get another pay, pay bump, third year, fourth year, so on and so forth. Now, at that, at that thirty-seventh month period that they have listed there, you're at a cap. You're at the max for that job. You will not earn more until the city decides to make a market correction and raise rates across the board for their city employees. So this is how Napavine does it. There's two graphs. There's the full monthly amount that the person makes. And then the graph below, it's the same thing, just in an hourly. So that was great to see that it's exactly what I'm proposing that the city does. So in this sheet, first sheet that I passed out, if you see down below, it says step progression. There's a little chart there. Step one, you'd be from zero to six months, your initial hire probationary period. And then after your probationary period, you would go to step two for the next six to twelve months. And then you'd go to step three at your first year of employment. And then it's every year after that, up to five years of employment, when you hit the max for that, for that job. And the idea behind that is you are fully experienced in the job after five years, and you're doing the level of work that we would expect a full professional to be doing. So also tradition from all the cities that I find, and if you calculate the Napavine numbers here, it's the same. Each step increase is five percent. So going from one to two is a five percent increase, two to three is five, another five percent, so on and so forth. And you can see here on my notes down here that I highlight that each step advancement is a five percent increase over previous steps. Note B, each year during the next year's budget preparation period, so October, November timeframe, the, the council would compare our pay rates to the market averages of other cities, kinda like what we've done, done here, and decide whether or not we need to increase our rates to meet the market, the market competition. And then also note C, with approval of the council, a new employee with relevant experience could be hired at a, at a step level above level one, so if they weren't. So this is.
So this has to be done in effect before we plan the budget for next year. That's obvious.
Well, I'll get to that point.
Okay.
But if we adopted this, the, the great point of part of this is that when we go to do the budget for this, for the next year, we'll know how much we're gonna pay our employees for the following year, right? So we'll know that, that they're gonna all be another year, if on the job, they'll get their, the, the next step level increase. We can plan for it. Right now, the way the system is set up, there is no plan for it. We plan the budget with the current pay rates, and then sometime after the budget's passed, in March or whatever, the mayor comes to the council, and then we scramble to try to find money if we decide to raise the rates. And doing it this way, we wouldn't have to do that. It'd be planned first. It'd be part of the budget, and we could plan the budget around doing what's expected and normal of us.
So you're, you're gonna make a motion to adopt this plan right here, and then afterwards, we start looking at the rates?
Right, and I have information for that. But if, if we like this, if this plan works, this structure, then we can talk about the actual numbers. But I can, I can show, show you city after city after city that I've looked at. This is what they do with some minor tweaking. For instance, sometimes they don't do probationary period. Sometimes they don't do, you don't get a raise at all until your first year of employment. Different things like that. Longevity pay, so after seven years of employment, to show that we're grateful of you being a long-time employee, you get a little bit of bump every month, an extra twenty-five dollars or something like that. So anyway, there's a lot of little tweaking that they do, but this is the basics. If we were to hire someone with experience to come work for us, this is what they would expect to see.
You don't want to take the next step and share your projected pay structures?
Well, I.
I think I agree with Jill, take it one step at a time. We either approve or disapprove the process.
If, if you like this, if, if this is something that the, that the council wants to go forward with, I have.
I'll put a motion, okay, will we approve this plan? Let's get it approved, and let's move on. Okay, there's a motion for you.
One second.
There's a second.
You heard the motion submitted by Mr. Flynn to approve this job classification salary step structure plan. And, and we have a second for Mr. Flynn. Now, you need a copy. Approved and seconded. Do we have any additional commentary? Because I, I've got to interject that I am most impressed with this. I've just gotten goosebumps since Jill shared it. And I'm very pleased with the council's decisive action on this. Going to enable us to drag this city even further into the 21st century.
Well, when you look at the other rates, and I, I'm sorry I interrupt all the time. When you look at the other rates, if we don't become competitive, then we will always have the bottom of the barrel of people working for us.
We'll talk about rates here in a second.
Yeah, I know that. I know.
I've got more.
I know you do.
Oh, well, I thought we were gonna table that.
No, 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 I'm not table.
We gotta get the motion passed first.
Cuz you can't talk about the, that, that step until we talk about this one.
Okay, well, we've got the second on the table here, so, so any other commentary? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? More smooth carries, excellent.
All right.
Just FYI, we'll have to put this together in the form of a resolution or something to add it to the, to the policy. And just so you know, you'll see this again, but after everybody has, all the people that we pay money to have put their ten cents into it.
And I can give you the raw files for that as well. All right, so now the next step, since you like that so much, here is, and I have extras. Pass that to Jill, please. So this is the, that table with proposed pay rates. So if you remember, a couple of months back, Jill provided us with a list from, was that from AWC?
Yes.
From our, the Association of Washington Cities, with all of the pay rates for all the cities with comparable populations. That way, we can kinda do an apples-to-apples comparison between our pay rates and other cities with relatively the same size and property tax income and things like that. So if you remember, we all, we all saw these, these charts. If you take those, I took those charts and sorted them all by low to high pay, hourly pay, and then got rid of a couple of extras. For instance, on the city clerk page that we were provided, Hunts Point had a finance coordinator on there, and that job does not, it's not the same job. So there were a few things that we had to eliminate. But the average pay rate for a, a city clerk in Washington State, for a comparable city, is nineteen dollars and thirty-eight cents an hour. With a low wage of, there were three in the state that were below fifteen dollars an hour. The lowest being twelve oh one, twelve seventy-six, thirteen oh one, and then fifteen oh. So if you look on this chart that we just passed out here, you can see that this proposal would have step one, a, a new hire, a clerk that would do everything in our city, be started at fifteen fifty an hour, and after five years of employment, they would make twenty seventy-seven an hour. Everyone, every one of these pay increases from fifteen fifty to sixteen twenty-eight, it's a five percent increase, all the way to the max, maximum at five years of employment. And that fifteen fifty is almost the lowest around, in Washington State, the starting wage. And the twenty seventy-seven is the, slightly above the average for Washington State. So you'd start out at the low, and you'd work towards slightly above average, so we could be comparable in the city. The deputy clerk, the same thing. The public works laborer, the same thing. With the public works laborer on the sheet that was provided to us, a lot of those folks that were on here from across the state, they were involved in the utilities in this, in the city. So a lot of sewer work and things like that. Not exactly the same cho, same job that our employee is doing right now. No?
He is in charge of the collection system. So whatever sewer lines issues we have in the pump station, he is responsible for those.
Okay.
So there is some compare. He's not responsible for the facility plant duties.
Wait, I missed that first part. Who are you referring to?
We're referring to John, the public works employee. He does have a crossover into the utilities.
Okay, well, that's good to know, something we need to think about. When I, when I figured out for his wage, for that, for that particular job, it also goes, doesn't quite go to the average. The average around the, the state was fifteen ninety-seven. And then you can see that it maxes, maxes out here at fourteen seventy-four. So, but we can talk about that. A lot of the positions that were on this were for, like I said, a, a lot of, a lot of higher wages in here for maintenance and utilities type work and so. I didn't, I didn't know if that would really translate, but. So that would be one suggestion, starting out with the low in the state, working towards the average to slightly above average in the state. And also, if you look at these numbers compared to what we got from Napavine today, they're almost the same. And I just got this today, and I was excited to see that the hourly rates were almost the same as what I was proposing. So they're, they've lined up really well. Now, you might be asking, could we afford this? Why? Why? I have one last piece of paper here for you. Can you pass that to Jill?
It's all going this way.
So at the top of this page, these are the Vader historical pay rates. So you can see that in two thousand eight, actually Diane today was archiving some of the two thousand eight files, and she was able to pull out the Vader pay rates in two thousand and eight. Our pay rates are less, or the same as they were seven years ago.
That has to be explained. This city went through total failure.
I know, I know.
So this city's just coming back.
This city did have a lot of problems back then, but it's something to take note of. So the, so my proposal, you see that in the next chart, would be to move, start the, start our, both our clerks out at, well, I say step C on there. I'm sorry, that was from an old version. I meant step three. Start them out at step three, which would be a bump in pay for both of them. And then also our public works employee to move him to step two, which is at the, at the six months plus pay level. And that, in that proposal chart, I have the cost. If we were to start this August, August first through the end of the year, see the hour per, hour per increase, and then the total amount that it would cost the city. Twenty-five hundred and eighty-one dollars. That doesn't include whatever extra changes that would, that would make to healthcare and retirement benefits and things like that. But that, that would be, oh, that would be a little bit extra on top of that. So that's what it would cost to do that increase from August first to the end of the year, to bring them up to mid-grade, basically, even though they've been with the city for five, three and five years.
Are those hourly, that increase total, is that based on the actual hours that they're working?
That would be actual hours, so for the clerk, forty hours a week, for the deputy clerk, thirty, twenty-eight hours a week, and for the public works employee, thirty-two hours a week. So, and there's, that's roughly a twenty-two week period, so that's what it would cost the city. So if we decided to do, to do that right now, or starting August first, we would have to find that much money in the budget to do that, which.
At the end of the year.
Which I would work with the city staff to do that. Now, future projections. Now, future projections, you can see for current, for 2015 in the green column, that's how much we spend on a year's salary right now for, for those three city employees. And you can see how it would increase throughout the years, all the way through 2019. And the idea in 2019 is that every one of the employees would have been here for the full, through, all the way through the seven steps, so they would be here for them, they'd have to be at the max pay grade at that point. And of course, that might not happen if people left and we had to hire someone new, our rates would go down. And you look at those numbers and you say, well, that's quite a bit more. We're going to have our water system back before then and we're going to be able to afford in 2017 or 2018 that without a problem. And I think we'd be able to afford it right now if we, if we wanted to, but it's going to be, become even more affordable later on.
By the time we get our water system back, we'll, by the time we were, last time we had two full-time city clerical staff and two full-time relatively high-paid public works employees. So we have four full-time personnel.
So, that's what I have. The hourly rates were based on the low and the average for the state of Washington for comparable cities, and that's where those numbers came from.
I don't think we can do that yet because we don't have enough information. We'll need to get some more information as far as what the actual totals cost would be, so that you can affect the budget. So what, how it would affect the budget and where that money comes from, we have to include that. Also, I, I don't see anything relating to the waste treatment operator.
Right, yeah, I didn't know what his pay was or how many hours he was working.
He's still on a six-month, so I wouldn't be too worried about that.
So he wasn't really.
What do you mean?
Nev hasn't been in that, in that position for six months?
No, he hasn't been in that position. Uh, yes, he has. Yes, he has.
I'd be inclined to suggest, since his pay was structured in a different manner, that at least for the time being, you implement this for the three.
Well, and that's another thing we need to check with the attorney and see if we can structure some employees one way and some employees another way, because HR stuff like this is where cities have to. And so we gotta make sure that that really.
No, I, I wouldn't suggest that he not be included in it, but that as far as any potential pay raises, the council will certainly be.
Sure, sure.
Well, if you guys.
He's still considered part-time, too.
Yes, he is.
Well, if you guys like it, the way it is, we can put it in the hands of the city staffs. They can run the, run it through the grinder and then, and then, and then come back with a final, a final draft.
Well, I want to thank Joe for doing all this because it sure saves a lot of time. I do personally feel that we have to be competitive. If we're not, we will have bad employees.
And you'll lose the good ones.
One thing you might, might want to make a note with all these charts, with what they're doing with minimum wage, it could affect everything, so.
I'd rather not think about that.
Yeah, I'd rather not think about it.
So, well, I'll may echo what Mr. Flynn just stated. I was totally impressed with the time and the accuracy and the extent of the information gathering that it required to put this together. Prodigous, gave me goosebumps and feel it's going to resolve a multitude of little problems that aren't normally seen within the personnel and the emotional, psychological challenges that we've dealt with over the years, just going through this, this antiquated pay process in the community. So if this comes to full fruition, Mayor Smith is going to be quite happy and I'm sure that our employees will too, because of your good efforts.
Motion, the direct, the staff to work on that, or what are we going to do? We want approval, but keep it largely as written and?
I want to submit a motion to authorize the mayor to work with clerical staff.
I submit a motion for the mayor to work with our staff to work with these, these charts and, and put together a final proposal for the council.
By our next council meeting.
That would be, that would be great within two, two weeks or, or four weeks.
Heard the motion submitted by Mr. Shai to authorize myself to submit his package for approval by our clerical staff and then have, provide a more detailed and specific product to the council at our next city council meeting. We have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Flynn. Any additional comments? Here we go, all in favor say aye.
Aye, aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
That's decisive.
You're hired.
I'm not done yet tonight, I've got one more thing.
You get a raise. You go from zero to 25% of zero.
That's right.
Hazard. All times all. An offer spent on other people's money.
So now let's proceed on our last agenda item. The council will consider applying for a street prepared grants through the TIB funding. And once again, pleased to return the time over to Mr. Shai, who met with some representatives last week and I've received a report and I'm anxious to hear his presentation with the council.
So I'll make this, I'll make this fairly short. So a few weeks ago, I went to the Transportation Improvement Board meeting down in Vancouver, met with the, our regional engineer, Chris Workman, who agreed to come to the city, look around town and see what options we'd have to apply for grants through the annual Transportation Improvement Board program. He did come down. Also, our city engineer, Jerry Morset, came down. And so we had our representative and the representative for the state here. Walked around town, looked at the different streets. There are some streets that will not qualify for TIB funds. If this, it sounds kind of funny, but if streets are too far gone, they won't help us fix them. So, so for instance, Fifth Street down in the back, on, on, down past the post office in Warden Park down there, it's almost all, it's just gravel now. We looked at that, it's not going to qualify for anything.
I wonder who put that gravel on there?
I don't know, but it was better than.
I think it was in, somewhere in 1960, a guy named Andy Wilson put that.
Well, there was pavement at one time since the 60s.
It wasn't quite as good then as it is now.
Yeah, well, the gravel looks, is better than the potholes that were there earlier in the year. So, so that would lead, that idea that if streets are too far gone, we can't get this grant funding for it, leads us to the next step, which is, all right, so what streets are not too far gone that we can apply for grants from? And on this, and there's lots of work that could be done around the city, but this was, this was the proposal from those two engineers. So you could see the stretch of A Street in front of the post office, in the, in our quote, unquote downtown area. If you walk those streets, you can see that it's sloped and it's starting to alligator, it's starting to crack. Even though it looks pretty good, it's, it's not too many years away from being to the point where it would have to get totally redone.
Being in front of the post office.
Yeah, so that area there.
Yeah, we had that done in, not too many years ago.
Yeah, well, it's starting to, it's starting to show where, and so they, they recommended that that stretch, that block there, and also the continuing block between Warden Park and, and the, and the church, all the way to Fifth. So it'd be that, that two-block area.
Circle.
Yep, circle on the map there. So those two blocks would get redone. And also, if you remember, last year we applied for a sidewalk grant through them that we didn't get. He also wanted to include that sidewalk project as part of that, because if you're going to redo a road under an arterial grant program, you have to have sidewalk on one side. So we'd, we'd bundle that in as well. So sidewalk and the road. Now, that's under the arterial grant program. There is a street preservation grant program as well for non-arterior roads, so they're not real mainstream roads. And that would be where the other sections are. It'd be the block of A Street over here in front of the Masonic Lodge, and also the block of B Street over here in front of the fire station. So those two blocks, of course, the fire station is patched all over the place, and then that street over there, the, in front of the Masonic Lodge.
It's in bad shape.
A quarter of it has already gone to gravel. I mean, the road, it's down almost one lane. So, and to continue the work that would be done on the B Street here by the fire station, it would make the corner here and go up the hill all the way to D, to fix that as well. So those four areas, A, North A, South A, B, and a little bit of Eighth, the two blocks of Eighth, would be part of our grant proposal.
That would be all one grant?
Would all, well, it'd be two grants. They are aware of why we'd be doing two grants, because one is arterial and one is street preservation, and they are aware that it would behoove them to give it to all, give it to us all at once, because if the contractors are here all working at the same time, it's a lot cheaper to do it once. So it just happens to be two.
What did they do about History, where Allison lives and Jason lives, because everybody goes this way and around there, the church people do too, it's getting so bad now that...
Yeah, so we're going to have to find other means of funding to fix that, whether we pay for it ourselves, which we could do, or find some other source of, of grant funding. At the next council meeting, wait, or the next, hopefully at the next council meeting, I'll have some ideas as far as fixing some of those other streets with some of our funding that we do have.
Trees like this and this, that's in the same street.
Yeah, so, Joe has some questions.
Yeah, I have two things. One is just for council's edification, I sat through a couple-hour webinar that explained this funding source, the, the TIB funds, and it's important to remember that this is a competitive grant program, which means we have to score better with our grant application than other cities in order to be able to get the money. And so they score us based on a lot of different criteria, and some of it is, or a large part of it, is the location of the street and how much that gets used by the community, and that, so it behooves us to choose those streets that are, have the heavier use or are more, would affect more people in the community. And so some of these choices may not be the worst streets that we have, but they're our best chance for grant money. So, you know, when you look at these maps and you see some are marked in red and you go, why aren't we going after those fun, you know, those streets? Well, it's probably a very slim chance we would get a grant based on that location. So just some information for you about that, and if you want to know more about that, I have the paperwork here, welcome to come and look through it. The other thing I was going to ask you about, Joe, was as I was sitting through that webinar, one of those programs jumped out in my mind, Ananen Road, because some of the funds from one of those grants allowed you to purchase land or the property for the road. And they mentioned that in one, and I can't remember which one, I have to go back and look and see which one that was, but included acquisition as well as buildup of the road itself. And so if, unless I misunderstood it, but I thought, oh my goodness, and it's such a major thoroughfare for the city, it's in the city limits, it's our only businesses are right there, you know, just as a, a thought, talking with them.
If we keep the core of the city as good as we can, it makes the city look better.
He's right.
Instead of going way up on F Street, well, that don't help us, you know.
I, I remember a little bit about the, the purchasing, and it sounded like it was for, if you were going to build a new road, like if you, if you had built a school and you wanted to add another major arterial to get to it, you could apply for money to buy land. I seem to remember that, but there may have been some other stuff in there. But along those lines of being competitive and having a good reason, when we apply for this grant, we're going to include, there's going to be some story involved. For instance, the downtown stretch, the city is purchasing, or will have purchased by the time we submit the grant, hopefully, that new section of Warden Park. We will have, we're going to be, we already got a Berleji Northern grant to work on that park. We want to put sidewalks along our new park. We use the downtown area as a community and gathering area, gathering spot for Fourth of July, for May Day. I'm going to take pictures of that, the Fourth of July event. We're going to include those with the grant and say, look, this street isn't just for cars, we actually use this for community events as well, it's a community gathering area. So as far as making a story, we've got, we've got some extra information to include to make it, to make it hopefully exciting enough that we get, we could be competitive.
That's goosebumpy, too. It's very compelling, and I could see how that would make a very strong case.
It's what we've got.
Yeah.
So, anyway, so that's it, that's the grant.
But I think it would be remiss if we didn't just take a minute or two, Joe, to share with the group, because I, I think I only discovered a few weeks ago that we don't have to wait to get our own funding set in motion for our own projects, because the funding that we have set aside as a council in a city, we don't have to wait for it to be inserted in a capital improvement plan. So we're in the dry season now, we have over $20,000 available to us, and we can pave a couple thousand feet, I suspect, as we do the research on it. And Mr. Shai has indicated that he'd be willing to establish contact, and we do have a list of priority streets in the city of Vader. 10th Street between E and, what is it?
H?
H, yes. And maybe even Alpine Court, it's just deteriorating rapidly, and it is one of the main emptying points for all those residents who live on that southeast corridor.
Is there anything we could do with, what is it, G Street?
Yeah, it's bad.
That's a mud bed.
Brand can.
You know, chip see it, chip see it or something like that?
It's not, it won't, it's got to, we have some pavement there that's sealable.
Probably $10,000 to do that street.
Yeah, I know, it's a mess.
But Mr. Shai's indicated that he'd be willing to contact some companies and, and begin to get some cost assessment or estimates to see how far we could stretch that money. And I personally am excited, because we all know that it's the number one priority in the city of Vader, among the residents.
Let's say we give Joe the authority to go contact these people and let's get some numbers up to find out what we can do.
In favor.
Do we need a motion for that, or what?
Probably not.
Okay, let's do it.
And I see nods of the affirmative. So, Joe, just go.
Let's probably undo it anyway.
Yeah.
Glad you gave me approval.
Make sure you come and get the list of people who can do it.
Okay. All right, so that's it.
I'm ready. That's all I got. Moving and shaking, city council is to reflect well on all of you.
At least we can generate some paper.
Exactly. But with that, having completed the agenda items, I will personally declare this council meeting adjourned at 7:15 PM.